Good evening, welcome to the monthly meeting of the Wycomico County Board of Education. As we always do, we begin our meeting with a pledge to the flag led by one of our fine students. So, please rise for the pledge to the flag. And I'll turn it over to this young lady.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to wherever which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very nice. Very good. It's my pleasure to introduce everyone to Lily Dimuzio, who is a student at Beaver Run Elementary School. Thank you for being with us, you did an excellent job. Would you introduce who's your guests who are with us tonight to the audience?
Mommy and daddy.
Mommy and daddy. And any other little brother?
Yes.
The little brother, and then?
Mr. Twiller.
Great job. And for you, I have a certificate frame, you can hang it on the wall, and a flag and some pencils. Okay, that's for you. We're gonna have our picture taken. Okay? Mr. Butler's gonna take a picture. Oh, thank you. Great job, Lily. Thank you. One more, one more. Oh, one more. Sorry. Are you ready, Lily?
I may might just need a moment.
Oh, yes. Good job, Lily. Good job. Thank you. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, 3.2, approval of tonight's agenda. It's our motion to approve the agenda. Sir, a second? Thank you. All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. 3.3, moment of silence. During the last month, we lost another one of our fine educators. Retired Marion Louise Nicholas Parker. She taught in Graysonville, Maryland, later at Fruitland Primary School, and after many years retired from North Salisbury Elementary School in 1994. Please take a moment to recognize her in your own way. Thank you. 3.4, student reps to the board. Seated at the table tonight from James M. Bennett High School, Yusol Nam.
Yusol.
Yusol Nam.
Yes.
Got it. Thank you. Yup.
Good evening. I am Yusol Nam. Good evening. I'm Yusol Nam, the Executive Vice President of the JMB SGA. Although I couldn't come with our president, I brought a lot of good news. Last Thursday, JMB had the honor of being recognized as a SBY kind school. During Valentine's Day, our students and staff members spread kindness in our school. The most successful event among many events was the passing of positive messages. More than 150 Post-it notes with positive messages were collected and turned into a banner, and students, staff members, and anyone in our school on February 12th were able to make, to take one Post-it and pass it along. Also, upper-class students wrote nice messages on cards and were handed out on Valentine's Day to freshmen by the SGA. JMB had a winter pep rally in February, with our great winter athletes recognized during the pep rally, and students enjoying games and dances. The SGA is planning for better and more creative games for our next pep rally, which will happen in April. Our wrestling team ended with great success. Mike Reddish placed fourth, and Julia Fitzpatrick placed second in the state championship. Our students not only showed great athleticism, but also great academic ability. Last week, our varsity math team won first place for the entire season of the county high school math competition. Additionally, last Saturday, the JMB STEM team traveled to Mount Heverin High School to participate in the science Olympiad, showcasing their knowledge. The team qualified for the state science Olympiad competition. As the winter sports season comes to a close, our students are hard at work preparing for our spring sports season. Triads for sports have ended, and athletes are already practicing hard for their first games. They are looking forward to making their season amazing and bringing happy news to our school. Yesterday, sign-ups for the spring blood drive started. Like the last blood drives, JMB is looking forward to another great blood drive. If you want to donate blood, we'd love to have you sign up. Our students and administrators will continue to do their best and bring more good news to the Board of Education and our community.
Thank you. Representing Mordella High School, Tiana Staten. Welcome.
I'm off crutches.
Very good.
Alright. So, it's been very busy at Mordella. All of our winter sports seasons have ended, and we held a ceremony to celebrate last night. The banquet included awards, speeches, and light refreshments. We celebrated our baseball, or I mean our basketball indoor track, Unified Strength and Conditioning, and wrestling teams. Student athletes with a 3.25 GPA or higher received the Minds in Motion Award, and I just like to brag about the track team. Track team got 89% of those awards. And the girls' basketball team reflected on the growth of the individual players. The boys' basketball team focused on their commitment to the sport. The track team celebrated breaking nine school records this season, and our wrestling team celebrated their wins. But also, most importantly, our Unified Strength and Conditioning team earned Mordella the title of being a national banner school. And they'll be unveiling their banner next month. None of this would be possible without our sports boosters, so we'd like to thank them. And moving on to our spring sports, our middle school baseball and softball teams are back for the second year now, and we had 40 girls and 24 boys try out, so the teams are gonna be looking really good. And for the band, we had 71 instrumentalists travel to the solo and ensemble festival, and they earned a total of 111 medals, and you had to get either a superior or excellent rating for that. We had 68 superior pieces and 43 excellent ones. And tomorrow, we have festival at North Dorchester. Also, last week, we had our Warriors Challenge, and for the Warriors Challenge, basically, we have teams, each grade is a team for high school, and then we have parents and alumni as a team, and staff as another team. And then we played games like tug-of-war, over-under. Unfortunately, the parent and alumni team won this time, but seniors came in second place, and we're gonna hold that there. But the alumni and parents donated their money to the freshman class. And lastly, our SGA has been working really hard for the pasta for patients fundraiser, and basically, we're raising money against leukemia and lymphoma. So, we had a talent show and pasta night dinner combination, so it was like dinner and a show. And our goal overall for the entire month of March was to raise $750, and we raised $900 just that night, so we're gonna continue fundraising throughout the month, but I don't know, we were really excited about beating our goal on the first night, and that's all I've got.
Thank you. Parkside High School, Gavin Dennis.
Welcome. Thank you. So, good evening. This past month, we've seen great excellence at Parkside. Can turn off with our kindness week at Parkside, which happened on February 17th through the 21st. My fellow classmates and I were able to write notes to our teachers and give them supplies, as well as writing notes to each other. My favorite note that was given said, "Thanks for making our students sharp," with a Sharpie attached along with the note. Moving to the vets and repodits team, I'd like to exemplify their achievement at the recent competition, as they are the regional champions for Delmarva. And then recently, the All County Orchestra performed, which Parkside had two participants. Congratulations to James Shaw and Gracie Elswich for their excellent performance. Parkside became state champions in the 2A 4x200 indoor relay. Congratulations to Cory White, Travis Waters, Davion Wilson, and Logan Church. Our girls' basketball had a great season as well, going 23-0 before a loss. They also won Baysides and the 2A East Regional Title, so congrats for an outstanding year. I'd like to also congratulate Coach White, because he did receive his 400th win. This past weekend, Mike Collins, or Big Mike, won the state championship for wrestling. He's the seventh person in Parkside history to achieve such an accomplishment. Salisbury University held a Maryland History Day competition, which Parkside won the senior group documentary division. The following students and I represented the team: James Shaw, Felipe Calderon, and Anissa Katak. Recent blood drive that the SGA held had over 50 participants. I'm glad to say everything went great, aside from me there and up, of course. And then, on February 22nd, Parkside held the Promise Prom Event, which allowed for any students across the county with a valid ID to be well-prepared for prom. We're glad that it is back at Parkside, as it was seven years ago. SAT Day, which happened last Wednesday, went very well, with all, with our juniors working hard, which puts them one step closer to attending their college. Now that we're all caught up with recent events, let me tell you some upcoming dates. Tomorrow, our band is going to the District Band Festival, which is held at North Dorchester High School. Ms. Zakowicz, who is teacher, who teaches health and the Teaching Academy of Maryland, is Parkside's Teacher of the Year, and will be competing for the county title near the end of March. And then, we are glad that spring sports is finally kicking off, and the seniors are in the process of planning prom and baccalaureate. And last, but certainly not least, 10 athletes are attending the upcoming Special Olympics, and hopefully, they will qualify to move on to upcoming competitions. Hopefully, all of our students and teachers will do well in these upcoming events. Overall, Parkside has had an amazing year so far, and this should be credited to our renovations that changed Parkside for the better. We're all back in one building, with renovations like our new auditorium, bleachers, technology, heating and air, and as well as a new facelift, to offer the best learning experience possible. Thank you for everything, and we'll finish out the year strong.
Thank you. Wycomico High School, Reese Chang.
Somebody else on crutches.
Welcome.
Hi there. So, our Spirit and Kindness Weeks at the beginning of February went over extremely well, as students could be seen promoting kindness and school unity all week long. There was also a PBIS incentive that Friday, February 14th, and over 500 students qualified to attend. As the winter sports season comes to its conclusion, we are extremely proud to recognize Aleah Harris as the state champion in indoor track and the 55-meter dash, and Jeff Pointe de Jour as the state runner-up for the high jump. Our boys' basketball team has again made the trek to the final four, and they will play in the state semifinal this Friday as they chase after the state title. The SGA held our annual bingo fundraiser on February 22nd, and we are excited to say that we raised over $8,000 for this year's prom. Yeah, so, not to brag or anything, but we're kinda ballin' right now. So, our annual, our annual symposium on local African-American history took place on Wednesday, February 26th, to commemorate Black History Month. There were exciting educational opportunities for students, including a display and infographic about the Church Street mural, and recognizing Harriet Tubman's achievements, and a presentation by the Director of the Charles H. Chipman Cultural Center, Mr. Vance Albert. For the second straight year, our JRTC program will be sending four cadets to Washington, DC, as our academic team has qualified for the national finals held at Catholic University. Only 32 teams from across the nation qualify from over 1,400 participants. Alex DeMaze, Matthew Wagner, Bobby Schaller, and Dana Bozik will be the four cadets road-tripping together this summer, and they're the only team from the eastern shore and in the state of Maryland to qualify for the Academic Bowl Finals in June, excuse me. Looking forward, the Maryland Music Educators Association will honor our very own Mrs. Jana Hobbs with the 2020 Award for Excellence on March 13th. Ms. Hobbs has been a great music educator in Wycomico County for many years, and we are very excited to see her receive this recognition. Our freshman and junior class SGA are co-hosting a Spring Fling Dance to be held on March 20th. Tickets are on sale all week, and the SGA hopes we will have a semi-formal, but super fun time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Every month, we have the student reps to the board come in here and deliver just very well-done reports, and they deliver them in such a professional manner, we thank you very much. I know I speak for my colleagues when I say it's very important to us and a big highlight to our meeting each month. Thank you very much. How about a round of applause for everybody? Okay, 3.5, public comments. I don't have any in front of me, so we'll go to 3.6, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Handlin.
Good evening. So, I am very pleased to start my report this evening. I do have a few items, but first, I'd like to begin by recognizing some very important partners that we have in our community with our school system, and so, we wanted an opportunity to recognize those, you can tell we have an auditorium full, those partners in our community, our faith-based partners who work with us, work with our schools on a daily basis, and we're so appreciative of that partnership. When I speak of this partnership at state meetings, other superintendents are all ears. They are envious and wish that they had the strength of the partnerships with their faith-based community that we do here in Wycomico County. So, thank you very much. Dr. Briggs, you wanna make any comments?
Sure. Yeah, I'll introduce our wonderful guests who've made their way down to the table this evening. First, we have Dr. Whitehead from Salisbury's Promise, who'll be able to share a little bit about the partnerships that he's been spearheading for years now, and we're very much grateful. And then, two other guests, Dr. Van Holton from St. James AME Zion Church, and then Pastor Gleason from Allen Memorial, share a little bit about how they support schools here in Wycomico County. And after they're done, we'll then have certificates for everybody who's here in attendance tonight, so. Dr. Whitehead, it's all yours.
Thank you. Dr. Handlin and members of the board, thanks for having us here tonight and recognizing the faith partners. What I wanna do is provide you a little background, and then I'm gonna turn it over to my esteemed colleagues over here to share a little bit about the benefits that they see for their church and school partnership. We have 43 partnerships, and the majority of them are here tonight. I think that's wonderful. Some partner with one school, others partner with more than one school. Some are partnered with schools for a number of years, others have recently formed partnerships. So, it's growing, and any faith community that's interested in partnering, we're happy to work with them. And almost all of our schools have a faith partner, so there's still some out there. Salisbury's Promise began working to foster faith partnerships in 2002. Some of you have been around as long as I have, and you may remember that in 2002, America's Promise Alliance selected Salisbury, Wycomico County as one of 13 demonstration sites in the United States. That was pretty good accomplishment. As a result of that, America's Promise Alliance sent a number of consultants down here to meet with a number of stakeholders in Wycomico County, and one of that groups was the faith We asked the faith community to help provide the five America's Promises to our young people. The faith community has really stepped up. They are caring adults to our young people, and help provide an effective education. For example, they provide young people with school supplies, clothing, food, holiday gifts. They volunteer for school events and support a black history reading program. In addition, they support our teachers by having staff appreciation luncheons, back-to-school luncheons, and breakfast, just to name a few. And now, what I'm gonna do is turn it over to Donnell and Bruce to share a little bit, they've already been introduced, so go ahead.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us. Our faith-based partnership, Pemberton Elementary, is partnered with St. James AME Zion Church at 521 Mac Avenue in Salisbury, Maryland. We have worked with the parents and the families and given them strategies to help with reading and math in the classroom, as well as skills to help prevent bullying. We have learned about other cultures by taking field trips with the families to learn about the history of different culture around our community. We have been to the National Museum of the African-American in Washington, DC, the Jewish Synagogue in Berlin, Maryland, and the Nanook Indian Museum in Delaware. We acquired so much knowledge from these outings and meetings. The partnership with the school and the church has provided another resource in the community that the parents and the students can use to help them grow physically, mentally, and spiritually. Thank you.
Thank you, Donnell. Thank you.
Allen Memorial Baptist Church started a partnership with Prince Street Elementary School nine years ago, with the desire to do a backpack program. At the time, when we approached the school, they said, "We have about 100 students to start with, that we would like to do a, we pack a backpack of food to send home with them every weekend." Because a lot of them get free or reduced lunches and breakfast at school, but over the weekend, there's no food in their home. Tonight, a team of volunteers packed 350 backpacks to go to Prince Street this week, and we do that every week. But we do a lot of other things with the school, too. One of the things that started nine years ago was the librarian approached us and asked us to provide the volunteers for their book fair. And now, twice a year, we do all of the volunteers to run the book fair every year. But the partnership has benefited Allen Memorial in many ways also. We have actually chosen through this partnership that we have adopted that community as our focus as a church, and we now are, every week, have people prayer-walking the community. We have, as of today, six Bible studies in homes with families of that community, and trying to make a difference in the lives of the people there, but it has changed our church. Our church is getting outside the walls. So, the faith-based partnership has been an incredible blessing to us and to the school and that community, and we pray that we can do more each year.
Thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate you being here and representing the rest of our faith-based partners who are with us this evening. I know that you're just one example or two examples of the many great things that are happening through those partnerships. Thank you, Dr. Whitehead, for your leadership. How's it feel to sit on that side of the table? I know many years you sat on this side.
There's some familiar faces, however.
So, we're going to present certificates. Mr. Malone, Mr. Fitzgerald, come down front.
Yeah, so at this time, I'll call up a representative from the following churches, and at that time, you'll get a certificate from Dr. Handlin, and we'll probably wanna pose for a good picture, too. I'm basing this off of RSVP, so if the RSVP is a little bit wrong, we'll correct it in just a little bit, but first off, from 3C USA, Jordan Mohammedan. From the all-church community, Shavanda Kar. Allen Memorial Baptist Church, Pastor Gleason. Asbury United Methodist Church, Melissa Graham. Asbury Mount Vernon United Methodist Church, Pastor David Bennett. Bethesda United Methodist Church, Laura Atkins. Community Christian Church. Anybody from Community Christian Church? Alright, going once, going twice? Community of Joy, Pastor Martin Hutchinson. Crosspoint Church of the Nazarene, Pastor Jared Williman. From Emmanuel Wesleyan Fruitland Campus, Pastor Dana Stoffer. I'm not saying better half. I'm not saying. I would never say that, Mr. Stoffer. Emmanuel Wesleyan Maine Campus, Maggie Moore. Faith Lutheran, Karen Price. First Baptist Salisbury, Nate Giles. Higher Hope United Methodist Church, Mr. and Mrs. David Williams. Emmanuel Baptist Church, Sarah Varanowski. Impact Church of Fruitland, Pastor Wayne Parsons. Mount Zion United Methodist Church, Hope Cookie Price. Oak Ridge Baptist Church, Heather Smith. Parkway Church of God, Pastor Greg Morris. Providence Presbyterian Church, David Smith. Rapture Ready Ministries, Pastor Sharon Sampson. Renovate, Pastor Marilyn Circe. Slight adjustment. After you've gotten your certificate, we'll slide out and we'll do the picture out there. Still got a few more, though. Rockawalkin United Methodist Church, Debbie Hughes. St. Albans Episcopal Church, Rebecca Regor. Better half there, too. St. James AME Zion Church, Dr. Donnell Van Holton. St. Paul AME Zion, Mrs. Georgia Peoples. Sunrise Church, Pastor Mark Thomas. Trinity United Methodist Church, Maureen Williams. Another friendly face, too. Alright, now, I had a couple maybes, so if you're here, and I didn't call your name and you're representing a church, just let me know, and I probably have a certificate for you. Anybody? Okay, I think you guys can maybe go pose for a picture, and then we'll be good to go. Thank you, Dr. Whitehead, I appreciate it.
In the meantime, shall I provide entertainment?
So I have a few more items in the superintendent's report. It's hard to follow that because that was just wonderful to have those wonderful partners with us. But I do want to take just a minute to talk to the audience, as well as our listening viewers or viewers who are watching the board meeting, to just communicate some information about the current status of the coronavirus and what we're doing as a school system. So the biggest thing at this point for anyone to know is that we are closely monitoring everything that is happening around us. And when I mean, when I say closely, we're in meetings every day, we're on email and text every day among state leaders, as well as other superintendents from across the state, to make sure that we are on top of what's happening. We do have regular communication with our health department. In fact, just today, there was a group meeting with Lori Brewster, the health officer for Wycomico County, who is actually the lead for Wycomico County as we are dealing with this situation. And on last Friday, all of the superintendents met with the state superintendent, Dr. Salmon, and discussed this very topic. And at that point, it was still determined that decisions would be made locally. However, we are communicating among ourselves, as I mentioned earlier, to, you know, to talk with each other about the current circumstances. In terms of precautions, I believe we're doing a great job with disinfecting, thanks to Mr. Sousa and his team in our facilities department. Since last year sometime, we have been disinfecting at least our elementary schools a couple of times a week, Tuesday and Thursday evenings, is that right, Mr. Sousa? Tuesday and Thursday evenings in all of our elementary schools overnight. And we will up that as needs arise and the situation evolves. We do have a regular update, thanks to Mr. Butler and Mrs. Saylor, on our website about information that's important for the community to know about the coronavirus, including some very important, just everyday hand washing, how you should cover your mouth when you cough, not shaking hands, which we just shook hands. Anybody have any hand sanitizer? No. And certain precautions of that nature. We have our school nurses who are making announcements regularly to students in most of our schools, I believe, about some of those very important sanitary precautions. So I know that everybody is asking the question, "Are we going to close schools?" Well, at this point, we don't have any indication that we're going to close schools. The eight cases that have been confirmed in Maryland are from the Western Shore, PG, Hartford, and Montgomery Counties, and they are older individuals who were travel-related. And so, again, we are keeping a very close eye on that situation and, again, in regular contact with our health department. Should that change for us locally, we will certainly change course. We do know that should we, in the event of a closure, we're also having conversations about how we would have some, any kind of continuity of instruction. The issue that we have locally is that only about 40% of our students have access to Internet at home in this community because of how rural it is, only about 40%. So we have to be concerned about equity and access. So we're continuing to have those conversations. Hopefully, that won't happen at all, but we're talking about some other strategies and then talking about with state leaders, again, should we be closed for any period of time, how that will play out in terms of any kind of waivers for time missed, any kinds of, whether we use hours to make up time. Those kinds of things are all decisions that, obviously, we're not faced with at this point, but those conversations are ongoing about what that would mean. We have, as all counties in the state of Maryland have done, restricted international travel by our students. We didn't have any planned at this point, but had there been international travel, then that would have been restricted. And we are in conversations based upon the governor's announcement yesterday that he was restricting state employees out of state travel. We are working and will probably be making some kind of announcements tomorrow about student and staff traveling outside the state. Again, everything is evolving, and we're considering the safety of our students and staff. So, again, I just can't say enough how it is constantly evolving. We're working very closely with the health department, and we'll continue to keep the community updated as we hopefully are not faced with any more serious issues locally, but we are preparing in that event. So that, I wanted to update the community on that. And the other two regular things that we do under my report, we have our Extra Mile Awards.
Okay, let's start off our Extra Mile Award in Maradella. Courtney Coco, Courtney, come on down. Courtney is an orchestra teacher at Maradella Middle and High School and also with Salisbury Middle School. In her own time, Courtney has single-handedly organized the prom dress drive for Maradella High School. Courtney advertised the event so well that, as a result, they acquired over 200 donated dresses that the school is going to be able to sell to students for $30 or less. And as you know, many students and parents, they struggle and sacrifice to pay for prom dress, so this is certainly going to help out. And Courtney, selfless act and always thinking of ways to help others, will make dreams come true for so many girls attending prom in Wycomico County this spring. Now, for this, we feel Courtney Coco is certainly deserving of the Extra Mile Award for February. And with Ms. Coco is Dean of Students, Mr. Cameron Ball. Come on down. Coco, this is for you, and this is for you as well. And we're going to take your picture. All right, let's give Courtney Coco a big round of applause for being our Extra Mile Award winner, going above and beyond for the month of February. Our second Extra Mile Award goes to Tyrone Suggs. Mr. Suggs, come on down. He is the Assistant Building Service Manager at Delmar Elementary School, and as part of our building services staff, Tyrone elevates the work environment by bringing laughter and a smile to everyone he encounters at the school. Now, in addition to his positive attitude, he also brings an excellent work ethic. All you have to do is mention something in passing that you would like to have done, Tyrone's going to get it done for you. Teachers and staff member alike have often said, "If you need something done, ask Tyrone." Now, with Mr. Suggs is Delmar Elementary Principal Kirby Bryson. Come on down. We'll get a picture with Mr. Bryson and, let me hand you this, Mr. Suggs. That's yours, and this is yours as well. There you go. Thank you very much for your service, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Suggs, for providing that extra service to our staff and students.
And my final item is our update on our grants. Dr. Briggs.
All right, for the month of February, we received five grants totaling over $580,000, with funding coming from MSD, the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore, and Constellation, an excellent company in partnership with the Baltimore Ravens. I want to thank all the WCPS staff, which this month includes two teachers, a coordinator, and several supervisors who took the time to submit grant applications to secure these extra funding that will benefit students across the district. So thank you to those guys.
Thank you, Dr. Briggs.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Hanlon. Five point, consent items, 5.1 through, no, you're confused, I'm sorry. 4.1, approval of open session minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve. I got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, the consent items. So 5.1 through 5.13 are our consent items. If there are any questions, I'll entertain them at this time. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
Motion to approve.
Motion is second, approve consent items. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 6.1, "Pun the superintendent's recommendation is there a motion to approve the proposed consolidated current expense budget for our fiscal year 2020 to 2021 as hereby presented?" Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Good evening, Chairman Fitzgerald, Vice Chair Malone, Dr. Hanlon, board members. I'd like to briefly highlight a few things in the document, but before I do, I'd like to thank our budget manager, Donna Rustetano, for compiling all this information. She did a great job of making sure we completed all the tasks on time as outlined in the budget calendar. So I'd like to briefly go through a few items for the benefit of the board and the public so everyone knows where to look for these items. And I'd like to begin on page 57. 57, which is actually 59 of the PDF. Can you guys see that or you want me to draw it up a little bit? Yeah, there we go. Okay, so starting at the top with our county appropriation, you can see we will be receiving one, an additional $1.53 million from the county in FY '21. This amount represents maintenance of effort, which is the minimum amount that the county is required to fund the school system according to the Annotated Code of Maryland. Just below that, expecting an increase in local revenue of $278,000, primarily due to a projected increase in our earnings on investments. Our state, total state revenue, about halfway down the page, is increasing from $156.2 million to a little over $160 million, which is a $3.8 million increase. And at the very bottom, you can see our prior year fund balance increased from $2.2 million to $3.3 million. That's a $1.1 million increase. So this gives us a grand total, got the marker right on it, of $6.769 million over the current fiscal year. Now, unfortunately, not all of that increase was able to go towards new requests because we have something called the mandatory cost of doing business, which is the additional cost just to open the doors next year, our very large health insurance increase, pension cost increase, et cetera. That amount totaled $2.58 million. Fortunately, we were able to find almost all that additional cost within our existing budget in the form of budget reductions, which totaled $2.44 million. So that meant we only ended up needing to use approximately $144,000 of this new revenue to cover the cost of doing business, again, after accounting for budget reductions. And I did want to mention that one of those budget reductions this year was the elimination of the subsidy to the food service program. It's been self-sufficient for the last several years now, so kudos to Eric Gosley for turning that program around. And that allows us to use those funds for other things, so we're very appreciative. And so flipping forward to page 65, which is 67 on the PDF. I'm going to start at the bottom just for a second. So you can see that $6.769 million in new revenue minus the $144,000 that I just mentioned nets to $6.624 million that we had available to put towards new requests. And it's the school system's vision to use those, that $6.624 million, towards the four priorities of Imagine 2022, the first of which being to ensure that students are ready to, are reading on grade level three by grade three, or on grade level by grade three. We currently have a little over $300,000 allocated for that, and aligned items include additional materials of instruction, three pre-K teachers, and one pre-K assistant. Our second strategy, to ensure that students graduate college and/or career-ready, includes, and I'm not going to go over all of these, but I'm going to hit some of the highlights. It includes four content teachers and two assistants for the newcomer center, four ESOL teachers, a related arts teacher for choices, and two program specialists for autism and special ed. This priority totals $995,000. Priority three is to ensure that all schools are safe for learning, and some of the highlights include four additional social workers, seven beans of students for the middle and high school students, and one transition room teacher to increase intervention opportunities for students. The total of this priority is $777,000. And finally, priority four, the priority for the cost of our, we needed $4.549 million to fund the cost of our negotiated agreements and the associated fixed costs per the parameters that were set by the board. And the total of these four priorities comes to the $6.624 million. So that's what we're putting our new funding request towards. We also put together a list of one-time funding requests from the county, which is on page And for the benefit of the public, one-time funding requests do not affect maintenance of effort. I mean, it doesn't add to maintenance of effort. The county had expressed some interest in considering one-time requests that were related to technology, school safety, and the overall maintenance of buildings, so we are hopeful that some or all, hopefully all of these, would be considered. And the total of our one-time requests is $901,000. And if approved tonight as presented, this document will be posted to the board's website on our transparency portal first thing in the morning, and I will be taking printed copies to the county executive's office tomorrow, well in advance of the March 15 deadline. And I stand ready to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Reed?
I think during the entire process, we've asked Mr. Reed many questions. Mr. Reed, I don't have any questions for you right now.
Thank you. Fair enough.
You've answered mine.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Reed, I'd just like to say I know what it takes to go and develop a budget like this, but I'd like to thank you and your staff and the members of the superintendent's staff for the work that you've done. Pretty ideal, idea is to kind of look at what we really need and what the county can afford. I think we've done a pretty good job of trying to stay within those guidelines.
Thank you.
It's a great job. Thanks.
Thank you.
Jesse, I just want to thank you for always explaining it clearly so those of us who are not involved with budgets can understand it. You do a very good job.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well done. So, no other questions? I assume you're ready to vote on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, Mr. Reed.
Thank you.
6.2, surplus property. Pun recommendation of superintendent is there a motion to approve approximately 3.3 acres, a portion of parcel 243 on Tax Map 29, grid 20, located on the west side of Jersey Road as surplus property. Per COMAR, this is also subject to the review and approval of the state superintendent of schools and Wycomico County government. If approved by all of these agencies, the property will be transferred to Wycomico County. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Second, thank you. Mrs. Ashby.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Fitzgerald, Vice Chair Malone, and Dr. Hanlon. A few months ago, the county executive's office approached Dr. Hanlon for consideration regarding approximately 3.3 acres of an existing 14.13 acre parcel along Jersey Road as surplus property. If approved by the board tonight, staff- If approved by the board tonight, staff will proceed with submission to the inter-agency commission on public school construction for state superintendent consideration, and I stand for any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Again, this is, discuss completely. We appreciate Mr. Culver reaching out to us about this parcel of property and his willingness to provide the proceeds from the sale of the property to help fund our OPEB account.
All right. No more questions? I assume you're ready to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ashby. Six point three. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, is there a motion to ratify the Unit One agreement as negotiated? Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Dr. Pavick.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll hold my comments until after six point four and six point five.
Okay.
Because I'll just lump them all together.
Uh, we have to vote on each one individually, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is there, no questions? Okay, I assume you're ready to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Six point four. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, is there a motion to ratify the Unit Two agreement as negotiated? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Assume you're ready to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six point five. Upon the recommendation of superintendent, is there a motion to ratify the Unit Three-Four agreement as negotiated?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Comments from Dr. Pavick?
Yes, uh, thank you.
Now that they're all approved.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate that. Chairman Fitzgerald, Vice Chairman Malone, Dr. Hanlon, and the rest of the board. I just want to, I know it's late, I know there's a hockey game on, and I'm going to keep my comments brief. I just want to take a moment to thank a lot of people, but most, first and foremost, I'd like to thank Dr. Hanlon and the board for your support. I know when we were looking at the contracts in closed session, Mr. Fitzgerald mentioned that we got these done early, but we could not have done that without your, you know, support and your ability. You gave us the ability to negotiate these contracts, and it's, I'm sort of just the front person that is charged with getting it done, but there's a lot of people that are here to my right and behind me, and folks that are not here tonight that, that make this happen. And that includes Mr. Van Kylenberg and Ms. Smith and WCEA and their teams, as well as Mr. Ray Gore and Absas. They're, as you know, some of you, they're not easy meetings, they're not, I sort of made the analogy last month that it's sort of like running a marathon. It's not particularly enjoyable when you're doing it, but it's very rewarding when it's done. And so, we have these done, and I think that we've treated our employees as fair as we possibly can. And so, I just want to thank you for your support and our teams for, you know, it was difficult. We even, we even lost an appendix along the way, so, you know, I'm glad that it's done, and I just want to thank everybody that had a hand in it. There are even people back at central office that put the documents together when it's all said and done, and so, I can't possibly thank everybody enough. So, I appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Second period's getting started soon.
I didn't realize there was a hockey game on, but that's...
It's not a local team.
Six point six, personnel matters is for information. So, seven point one, board members' reports. Start to my left this time, Mrs. Sthousky.
Thank you. I've had a busy, had a very good month. I attended a meeting of the policy review committee. On the twenty-first of February, I was the greeter at the Ward Museum for the student art exhibit. We had over three-hundred in attendance, and I really think they evacuated the town of Willards because I think about every other person that I greeted at the door was there to support the Willards community and the children who had the art exhibit. But we also had, at the exhibit, have student art from Glen Avenue, Parkside, Prince Street, and East Salisbury Elementary. This exhibit will be at the Ward for about another six weeks, so if you have a chance to come see it, please do. I went on the BOE field trip, and we went to Delmar, Pemberton, West Side Primary and Intermediate, Northwestern, and Mardella. I went down to Ocean City for the Junior Achievement and made a point of thanking all of the exhibitors that were from Wycomico County. I also attended the awards and recognition program at JMB that evening. I have read at Pemberton, I have read at Pinehurst, and Fruitland Primary of this month. On Saturday, the twenty-ninth, I went over to Salisbury Middle for the regional DI competition. The team from Y High, and when Reese was here a while ago, I don't think he even mentioned it, but their team got number one, and they will be going to the States. And if you're a betting person, they may win. That, their presentation was that good. I want to draw attention to something that is going to be happening this Thursday at the Ward Museum. At the Ward Museum, we will be hosting the Youth Environmental Action Summit. It will be held from nine to one, and we have nine schools in Wycomico County that will be presenting their projects. And it is open to all of us, so if you'd like to come over, I will be, I don't exactly what my job's going to be, I'll be there from seven AM until one. So, please come over to the Ward Museum and see what our children will be doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
On February twenty-fifth, I attended the Wycomico Retired Education Personnel Luncheon, and the thing that I enjoyed most about the luncheon, it's, the lunch is prepared by the students in the culinary arts program at Parkside High School, and also served by those students, and they did a fantastic job. It gives them a good opportunity to show off their skills. And in addition to that, we had entertainment from each one of the high schools. They sent one of their final winners, they had one vocal singer, one piano player, another one who was violin, and another one was also soloist. But they did a fantastic job, and all of those will be going to those state organizations to represent the school system. So, it just goes to show the kind of talents that we have here in the county. Secondly, I've received a number of thank yous from parents who have students going to Salisbury Middle School for the information that they received through the superintendent's office relative to the problems that had occurred at Salisbury Middle School. They're very thankful for the updates and the information that they were receiving on a regular basis. And they're also real pleased that they thought that the school did what was in the best interest for the safety, not only for the students, but also for the staff and personnel. So, that's another, a good plus factor for, for the school system. On last Thursday, I attended awards program, and the thing I enjoyed mostly about that is the fact that not only are we seeing our students receive outstanding awards, but it's spread throughout the school system. I noticed that many of the coaches who worked with these students, they were receiving awards, as well as our teachers who are receiving awards, going beyond the school walls and being representative of the school system. And on Friday, I read to students at Fruitland Primary School, and the best part about that is that the teacher was not there, but the individual that was in charge or had the duty of working with those kids that day was a student that I had taught in sixth grade. And the kids were really, they got a really good chuckle out of that, and compared, she's got, you know, nice hair, compare her hair with mine. And Vanna talked about some of the stories that she had experienced with me in, in sixth grade at Pinehurst Elementary School. But the kids there were, they're very attentive, very clinging to you, and it's just hard not to touch and feel the warmth that they give. And again, it's, really, it's indicative of what's going on in all the schools, not just at elementary level, but also the middle and high school level. And our students, as indicated in the student reports, doing many, many good things throughout the school system to honor and show what the county is all about.
Thank you. Ms. Laird Lewis?
Sure. Right. Good evening. It has been very busy since our last meeting. Like always, our county has stellar days, and it has not-so-great days. We are not blind to any of these things. I know some people on occasion think that we are missing the memo or, or missing what's happening. We absolutely are not. Please remember that there is nothing uncommon about what's going on in our school system or any other school system across the county, but our common goal, and I believe that everyone in this room agrees with that, is to bestow faith in our public school system by adding programs, resources, and outlets to our students, but all of those things take time. And with Jesse going over tonight, all of the things in the budget that we would like to do, I think that's quite evident. So, again, I want to thank you for your hard work and the collaboration with the individuals you're working with on that. Now, with that being said, I also want to, I was involved with an incident with my child here recently in the past couple of weeks, and what I would like to say is how thankful that I am that we push the situation and our students constantly hear, if you hear something or see something, to say something. And I know some parents sometimes don't realize that or understand that concept, but I was involved in it firsthand in the past couple of weeks. And I'm extremely proud of my school that my daughter attends for making sure that they make the students know that that is the correct thing to do, and I'm super proud of my child for being the one that was bold and stood up and did what she thought was right. So, with that being said, I attended the NAACP with Ms. Miles, and I actually had the opportunity to listen to Dr. Small once again. She has, I could just go on and on talking about her, but just, just briefly, she has an amazing book called Compass Points. It's the profiles and biographies of African-Americans on the Delmarva Peninsula. And she created a PowerPoint presentation, and she went through this with us, and individuals from past and present, and what they were bringing, what they were still doing, things that they are remembered for, and it was a wonderful and enjoyable experience, and I was honored to be able to go and pleased to have an invite. So, thank you for that. And I had the pleasure to be guest reader at a few of our schools, as like, as did many other of our board members. The first school I went to was Pemberton, and I brought my book with me because I requested to read to little friends. And this is a touch-and-feel book, so we would go through the book, and then they would have the opportunity to actually come up and touch the page that was most intriguing to them, which was wonderful. The title of this book is Wet Pet, Dry Pet, Your Pet, My Pet. And for those of you that know me outside of this room, you know that I have a sixty-five-pound English Bulldog, and she was my pet, and I took her in, pulled her in a wagon, and she was my guest reader while I was reading this book. So, the students were able to touch and feel and make a connection with this book, they could make a connection with me as I brought my pet, and then they were allowed to talk and discuss about their pet. So, I was pleased to have the invites for those as well, and I think we have a lot more activities coming up for the spring, and I am super excited to, to go into different schools and just enjoy and love all our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
Everybody's looking up. I had the opportunity to go around to six schools a couple of weeks ago, and I got to Delmar Elementary, it was our first school, and I was there half an hour early. And when I am early somewhere, it gives me the chance to wander around and observe things. And the first thing that I noticed when I was in the school that everybody had this strange hair. They had milk bottles, soda cans, rabbit ears, the hair was green, yellow, blue, the teachers were dressed this way, so that was really easy to observe. So, I learned it was some type of incentive, it was called Mad Hair Day or something like that. And so, that was easy to observe. Another thing that I observed was, when I went into the office, I sat there a while, and there were two ladies in, in the office, and I don't remember their names, but let me tell you what they did. Now, you know, Delmar's nine-hundred and some, I think forty-some students, a lot of kids go to that school. And they all come through this vestibule, secure vestibule, and they all seem to come through this one area there. And the one lady is able to check in all the bet, the guests who bring, who bring their kids in, they checked her IDs, driver's license, they give them a pass. They're very thorough. She knew everybody's name. The next was the other lady who told me she's going to retire in four years. She handled all of the other administrative events that were going, going in. The roll calls in the morning, the number of students, passes, missing lunches, I mean, she just did a world of things, you know, in there. And it's things like this that you don't normally see what people do, but I'm telling you. And she knew everybody in, in the school. I don't know how they do it. How can they learn so many kids' names and know them throughout the years? I'm always amazed at that. So, that was, that was an interesting observation. The other thing was at Northwest Elementary, we got there on Bookmobile Day. And let me tell you, kids want to read. In order for them to read, they want those books. So, it looked like they got to go out to the Bookmobile, a certain number at a time, and then when they were done, they came back in and they sat down in the hallway, and they were quiet. They weren't running around, I mean, these kids were quiet, you know? I was wondering about that, but they were quiet. And they were reading the books. So, this Bookmobile is one way to get these books in the kids' hands so that they can read, and I'm glad it's going on. So, these trips that we make around to these different schools every couple of months, it really pays off, and we really look forward to them. That way, we can go, we go that, that time, and then also, we have all the other events that we, that we attend at the individual schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Murray?
Sure. I wanted to answer Mr. Palmer's comment. At first, I loved it when he said that he was over at Delmar, and the one staff member could remember all the names and things of that nature. And I'm here to tell you, when they retire is when you forget other things, and I just wanted to answer that for you.
Four more years.
Yes. Anyhow, I'll make mine very brief tonight. It's a little bit different than my normal board report. I wanted to start off with, and I don't like to repeat things that have been said, but I enjoyed, again, the rock and roll concert, and I was able to go a couple times, and I greatly appreciated. And I think about the talent that we have in that one school, and then you combine all of the schools with all the talent that we have and things of that nature. I think it's important to note. I also wanted to mention that we have many, many students in our county that are not always able to have the things that they need. And I think it was special tonight representing all of our churches that participate and do the things, and of course, the Habitat for Humanity recently had its auction, which they do a wonderful thing, and I think that's important. important. The other thing I wanted to just briefly talk about was I enjoy always getting to go back into a school and try to grasp that opportunity when, when it's there, and we did do, or I joined Pemberton and West Side Primary and West Side Intermediate, which I have substituted in all three of those schools after I retired and thoroughly enjoyed it, and we did that with the supervision there of Dr. Hanlon taking us through and making it, and we thank him for that. The awards and recognition night at James M. Bennett Auditorium is always a special night to recognize, again, the talents and things that we have in our students and staff that have achieved high standards. Also, I was lucky, as some others say, I read at Pemberton in Ms. Smiley's classroom. Students were absolutely wonderful, they were behaved. Earlier, there was a meeting with faculty representatives, and I have three characters of Dr. Seuss, and I take them with me, they're back in the seventies, and when I was student teaching, I built the Dr. Seuss home, and so I've kept those characters over the years, and the kids really enjoy them, and I enjoyed that very much, and then of course, on February twenty-eighth, I attended the talent show over at Prince Street Elementary. Again, more talents, more, more things out there than just one or few of our schools. And of course, read over at Fruitland Primary, again, in the Stanley's class, which was fantastic, and had a great time in that class, and again, students were all attentive and on time. I just want to relay a couple things, and some of it is a review, that I was one of the, actually, Dr. Brown, you and I were the last two that were appointed school board members, and then we all went through an election where we are elected officials, and I just want to kind of remind everybody that, that we are elected, and there's not one person up here that I feel is not here for the students and involved, and sometimes it's difficult that, you know, you want, people will call you or see you or things, and, you know, we have to watch how we answer and we redirect, and I will continue doing that. And I just kind of want to say that I don't think any of us really have a boss, per se, but things are a little different now, except he does. So he does, I don't. But anyhow, with all that being said, I want all that to be considered, again, as a review, and remember that everyone's here for the students, the community, the staff, the parents, and our local and federal governments, as well as our state. And the only thing I'm going to say at the end is, Mr. Culver, I'm hoping you're watching, and all of us keeping you in our thoughts and prayers, and I, thank you.
Thank you. So I attended many of the same events as my colleagues. We did have another Habitat groundbreaking where we dedicated another home, which again, as Mr. Murray has mentioned, Habitat provides affordable housing for those who may not be able to afford it, it's a great organization. Dr. Hanlon, Ms. Suthowski, Mr. Murray, and myself attended Chefs for Habitat, which is our huge fundraiser in February, which it's turned out it's the biggest fundraiser Habitat's ever had. It was amazing. The staff at Habitat do a great job, so Molly Hiligoss, if you're watching, kudos to you. Also went on the school visits, Junior Achievement in Ocean City, we did the awards at James M. Bennett, I attended a fundraiser for Village of Hope at Mr. and Mrs. Shelton's Bordello Vineyards, which I'd never been there, but that was well-done, another great organization. And then the highlight, like many of you, was reading at Fruitland Primary. I read at a first-grade class, which, very attentive, and it was a great deal of fun for me. I would say, going forward, thanks all of you for, the last month's been a busy month with the, you negotiated agreements, the budget, staff's done a great job in delivering all that stuff flawlessly, and we appreciate it very much. Going forward, I would say we all have to deal day-to-day with what could come forward with the coronavirus that's on everyone's minds, both for the school system and financially, et cetera, so we all need to just, it's just day-to-day, and I'm sure this group will always be able to handle what comes in front of them, so. So being in the financial industry for my entire life, people always ask for my advice in these times when the financial world is crazy, so I'm going to read you a quote, and this, this is something that you should write down. "The safest way to double your money is to fold it over once and put it in your pocket." So that's my advice for you this evening on financial matters. Got to have a little laughter here. I saved our chairman for last for many reasons. He's our chairman, and for this evening, he's going to be able to deliver his board reports, and we're going to hear him, hear his voice, which I think is wonderful, and we thank the good Lord above for delivering it to us that way.
I'm a little getting emotional.
I didn't want to do that to you.
It's been a long haul. I just got this new vice today. I've got a few more weeks of therapy, but I want to thank you, all of you, for the prayers over the last five months. It's been very trying for me, not being able to talk or eat for four months, but the board education and the students, the fifteen thousand plus students in this county, it's what kept me going. Three surgeries. I could have thrown in the towel. I was raised in this community. I'm a fighter. All the good work, brood pants, I sat in a closed session to get an agreement with all three unions. This early is nothing but fantastic. I used to be on the other side of the table, and I know how hard it was. Again, the Dr. Hanlon and all the staff, we got a lot going on with this virus. We will do whatever we need to do for the betterment of these students. If anybody doesn't like our decision, they can come see me, because we will not do nothing to put them in jeopardy or our staff. Again, it's been a long haul, and my last word of advice, there's a gentleman down on the west side that's getting ready to go through a life-changing event for him. Mine started eighteen years ago. I said in my text, told him it's to be strong, and I mean that. We might not always see eye to eye, but it's not about that, it's about working and getting better, and I wish him the best. I want to see him better. I got a lot to say to him when he's better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald, and with that, we're adjourned.